Yes.
Go ahead and start the live stream, please, and let us know when we can commit.
You're live now, go on ahead.
All right, Mr. Kelly.
All right. Call the work session. On the county board superclassives. See who is doing their presentation here. Come on up.
Afternoon, gentlemen. I have a brief presentation for you in regards to some research we conducted concerning an in-house assessment department. I'll go through the slides and feel free to ask any questions. And I'm trying to get the commissioner today, she and I have some additional resources if you need them. So how I started the analysis was I looked at some comparison communities. And I did so in conjunction with the Virginia Association of Assessing Officers. And worked with them in regards to number of parcels and I sort of used that as a benchmark. So I looked at Goochlin County, Louisa County, Culpeper, Pulaski. And then I pulled in Almarlin Roanoke to kind of show you what a multiplier of times two would be to look at the ratios. So starting out looking at parcel data, you can see that Orange, Goochlin, Culpeper, Pulaski are about the same. Staffing levels vary. So for example, Goochlin has five full-time staff and one part-time staff. Louisa has six full-time staff, one part-time staff. Culpeper has seven full-time staff. And Pulaski has three, however, they do share those staff members. They are in the Commissioner of Revenue's office. So they have other duties assigned to them when it isn't reassessment time. And then by contrast, Almarlin Roanoke have, you know, between one and two times the amount of staff. For operating budgets for FY '21, we used here in blue, Orange County's indicator of what we spent reform permits over the last cycle. So that was just under $400,000. And as you can see, a lot of the folks who are similar to us, parcel size, spend just under four to just over $500,000 a year in operating costs for those departments. Pulaski again is that outlier because they're intertwined with their Commissioner of Revenue's office. So that is the reported amount that they spend specifically on reassessment duties.
So Almarlin's spending 1.6 million every year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And they assured me that they did not have enough staff for what they were doing. But it really does, it does appear to me that for folks that were about our size, it's between five to seven staff. Some of those may be part-time, some of them also may be seasonal. For example, when the equalization comes up, a lot of folks hire either someone who had retired from the department or an outlier to come in and help conduct that process. And several of these folks, as you can see on the next slide, also have different inspection cycles for physical inspections and their frequency, which also impacts the number of staff that they have. So and functions. So I tried to list here as clearly as possible, the types of functions that these departments have in these other localities. The frequency of their assessments. For example, again, Pulaski's at the maximum six years, which is why their budget was the lowest because they were waiting six years.
So they're doing essentially one-sixth of the county every year, is that how they're doing that?
Yes. And that is how a lot of people have split it up, specifically with the physical inspection cycles. They'll either do it in thirds or Goochlin's in a process now where it's six years, but they're trying to bring it into three. So they're trying to catch up a little bit. But a lot of folks do kind of parcel that out and they have their staff assigned, not necessarily to each district, but to neighborhoods or to certain parcels to kind of review the data from the building permits and from sales. And so they can focus on particular areas and know those areas well.
In terms of the function, did you get a sense of the relative magnitude of each of those? Because some appear to be very directly reassessment, you know, related and others not so much. And so the staffing is based on all of those functions, is that correct?
Yes. So and it varies. And again, the data that I was able to use that kind of helps me do apples to apples was this survey that everyone does to the Virginia Association of Assessing Officers. And it lists, for example, the types of software, the benefit packages, overall salaries for the number of employees. And so depending on what that function is, so for example, Pulaski has folks who work on land use, property transfers, building permits, and run their tax relief program. But they still hire out someone to conduct the physical inspections and they kind of break it up just due to their budget. While other folks do that in-house. And it also varies, it seems to be duties are more shared if the assessing officer resides in the Commissioner's office versus if they're a standalone department. Some folks report to a CFO, other folks are reporting directly to the county administrator. And some of those cross functions vary. For example, land use or the tax relief program. If someone reports to the county administrator and some of these examples, the tax relief program stays with the Commissioner. Other folks like Culpeper have taken that in-house with their assessor.
When you say land use, what function is that actually that they're doing?
I believe it's mostly property transfers. But I can get more clarification because each sort of classified things a little differently.
What I'm trying to get at is that our number, back on the earlier, of 400,000 approximately, it's pretty much pure reassessment.
Yes, sir.
And so now I'm trying to get a comparison of, well, do these other duties, are they just incidental? And the reassessment is the big ticket item? Or is there a balance, you know, that kind of a thing? Because it's a little hard to make sort of the apples to apples comparison.
It is, and especially since everyone sort of has set up their offices differently.
Mr. White, as I interpret that, I can be corrected. It's running the forestry and agricultural land use district program.
That land use, okay, got it, okay, right, right, right. That makes sense, yeah. Land use taxation, as it goes with. When you look at something like Pulaski that does one-sixth of it every year, do they change that one-sixth and keep everybody else the same?
I'm not sure I can ask because they subbed that part out to a contractor.
Well, the reason I'm asking, because if you've got a heavily inflation and if you're the last guy to get assessed and the other guy was assessed three to six years ago, the fairness of that, my guess is they do reassessments once every six years. That's what I see. They're not doing reassessments at all. It's contracted out, so.
But Culpeper does split, there's a, I'm a resident of Culpeper and I actually called this year to correct something on my notice. And I was informed that, you know, their staff is divided up by location. And so they didn't actually come to my house and inspect my house this year. I wanted to do for another two years.
I'm just saying, the assessed basis for the tax year, you know, I mean, if you're saying, well, we're inspecting one-third of them every year, but every third year we bring them all up at the same time, then you're keeping it equitable. The problem is if you're just doing part of them.
And Almarlin used to do, they used to do half the county one year, half the county the next year. And I mean, my understanding then was if you're, you know, the half that was just done there, you know, it's used for the, because that's only a, you know, that's a two-year thing, that's not six years. Yeah, you could be lucky or really unlucky.
Well, but to these points, one of the, a lot of the feedback I got during our reassessment this year was that the fact that it had been four years and chip prices had changed substantially. And so there was some sticker shock because of that. I don't know that you can root all that out, but that was a factor in people's, you know.
That's kind of a standard complaint that I've heard right along, because that's, I mean, we have gone, we have gone six years. We call it going six years. And I think at one time that was probably what the county did, just by default.
Well, I got the impression that what they did is they looked at individual properties and made adjustments on those. But that the, at least in one county, I thought it was Fairfax, that they'd say, okay, the average for the county was up 3% this year and everybody went up 3% except for the people that they inspected that may have had physical changes that would make it different than that. I had cause to look into some of the databases, Mr., those are a few cases in my district. And it was a, it was sort of an interesting process. They had, I won't get the numbers right, but approximately 600 sales took place in the county in 2019. Stopped me when I got completely off the cliff. And they organized those sales by the physical characteristics of the property as well as the location of the property. Free bedroom, two bathroom, you know, one level, two levels, basement, no basement, you know, located in this region versus that region. And then somehow sort of homogenized those groupings to get a percentage escalator. And it was that percentage escalator that they then applied to an individual property based on where it fit in that. I mean, is that sort of halfway right?
It's all based on the sales.
Was all based, that's right. That was the key. It was actual sales data, in this case from 2019. It was a big number, I mean, the database was fairly large, bigger than I would have guessed when I started looking at it. And so when I talked to constituents about what had happened, you know, I sort of got this blank stare because they didn't realize that it was that kind of a process. It was more than just, you know, one of these, I like your house and so it's going to go up. And I say that because it strikes me a little bit odd that when we talk about doing a third or inspecting a third or these kind of things, because our process, you know, I guess they made some adjustments in terms of physical inspections, in terms of what the property actually was made of. But it wasn't due to assessment, it was additions or decks or those kind of things they were catching.
Which you usually get by building permits or.
Which you can get by building permits, right. So I think the other part of this is understanding, what are the, what process are they actually using? Does it look like our reassessment contractor did it or is it some other process? I'm not asking you to answer the question, but I think we need to understand what are the acceptable processes, let me say that.
And I think it needs to be explainable to the citizens.
It must be, because, I mean, I found myself, and frankly, with Renee's, a lot of Renee's help, having some people that it was really hard to convince them what the process was all about.
And just to be clear, the mission that I set, Stephanie, on was not to get into the technical mechanics. You know, should we do a quarter of the county every four years and blend it or segregate it or six? Or it was more about the, what are other people doing in terms of staff size and cost and that level of research? And I feel good about that. But should we choose to go down the path of bringing it in-house? I would certainly want whoever is tagged to be the leader of that function to get into these very details. What of the options do you want to see in the design of the mechanics? The other piece that continues to be interesting to me is since, as Mr. White, you commented, that the data drives, you know, where we go. In this era of massive real estate data and, you know, getting a mortgage by typing in a few buttons on your phone and then it checking records about your credit score and the banks and Realtor.com values or Zillow or whoever, is there not a way to think about this differently than putting somebody in a pickup truck and having them drive out to go, oh yeah, I see they got a deck over there? Isn't there a data-centric, semi-automated way to do this? And we haven't been able to get a good answer to that. And I wonder to some extent whether, you know, it's, there's legislative issues that may need to be considered beyond what we can tell at this moment without having a, you know, a person who's really fully invested in that work every day.
Yeah, there probably is, you know, state code or at least some type of regulatory framework that we have to live within in terms of.
How much can we rely on data?
But what I saw in terms of these, what we've done this time, it very heavily relied on the reports of sales. That was the dominant factor.
Yeah.
That's what it's supposed to be, isn't it?
Which is how you get the market back.
Yeah, market back.
The other issue is with, without them visiting the property because we'd like to think that everybody gets a building permit when they do something to it. But that is not always the case.
And what works when you live in.
So and they have, they have come up quite a bit of improvements that were not, no better than this, was the thing, so.
And several of these localities did say that they relied more on some pictometry software where they kind of look at those things. And they would send someone else to field verify if they couldn't necessarily make it out on the software, but they were starting to transition, they just weren't as confident in that as an overall definitive source at this time.
There was an article in the Virginia Bar Association.
Yes, yeah.
Magazine recently that the trending is towards drones, using drones to inspect the properties.
Stephanie, I'm, why, I'm, I'm a little confused about why Pulaski's on here given that it specifically says that they don't do reassessments.
I just wanted to show you that there are other folks our size who are choosing to only utilize this department for other things. Just so you were aware that there were options out there of localities our size and what they were doing.
When you say this department, what do you mean?
The folks that are assigned to some type of assessment duties. So for example, in Pulaski, they run the land use, property transfers, building permit changes, new builds. And then they are responsible for overseeing the contractors.
So the Commissioner of Revenue down there doesn't do this? The separate department does this?
She has like a sub-department or he or she has a sub-department where they have an actual assessment director that has another staff member and they oversee this part. It's sort of like a quasi.
So it is under the Commissioner of Revenue?
It is, yes.
I don't see how that's any different than what we do other than there's a, maybe an additional management or director decision.
Yeah, so not per se, yeah. Personally, I think, and thank you for compiling all these, but like most things, you can throw out the high and the low. And if you look across the graph with those two gone, it's a very consistent level by all jurisdictions, it looks like.
Yeah, the only difference, to answer Mr. Duncan's question, is Pulaski has a real estate director and then a clerk and an assessor that are in-house all the time, specifically devoted to it. So it is more of like a sub-department similar to what we have now.
But they're doing, it sounds like that department is doing the same thing that the Commissioner's office is doing now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So they're not, they're not doing anything that our reassessment, our mass appraisal people are doing.
They, I believe, pick up like the, in between cycles. And I spoke to them about it a month ago, so I can definitely get clarification. But it was my understanding that they contracted someone to come in and do the mass reassessment and then they would pick up the building permit changes and some things kind of off-cycle to save money with that contractor. But it is not overly different than what we're doing now.
I was going to say, isn't that still within the department's right now?
We don't go back to our mass appraisal person and get them to do anything between.
Now, Gary does figure the new constructions in between the reassessments.
Oh, does he?
Yes, that's part of the contract, it's a good idea.
Since I just did some quick math, we're spending about $20 a parcel. Louisa, as an example, doing it completely differently, is spending about a little under $14 a parcel. Those numbers aren't definitive, but they're sort of an interesting.
Okay, but are we looking at, I mean.
Well, we have 20,000.
One-figure annual and one figures.
I think you're both in, it's 21 operating budget. I'm using your sheet there.
Yeah, but we've.
20,000 parcels at $400,000 a year, right?
That's easy, easier than I can do that. And Louisa has 33,000 parcels at $450,000 a year, which is 13,000.
We're not sending $400,000 a year.
Not each year, we're spending it each reassessment cycle.
Yeah, you could have, you could have divided ours up.
So this is, okay, so it's not.
Sorry, I had my little asterisk in the bottom, don't do it inside. Reassessment for one cycle is the only similar comparison I could make.
Our annual would be more like 100,000.
100,000, okay.
Yes.
All right. That was.
Yeah. So that.
Got it.
Okay. I was having trouble with the zeros, the twos and ones I can handle.
Well, the difference is that one is actually a four-year number.
Yeah, you're dividing one of them by four. The other one is every year.
But then you go back to these functions. I mean, if, for example, Louisa, if the first item there, their functions is, you know, 20% of the workload, then you're back to our number.
Now, for the, for the, the other county is the operating budgets. Is that an annual or is that a four-year cycle?
It's annual.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
So Goochlin is paying 500,000 per year, we're spending 400,000 every four years.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, now, the other thing that's thrown in there though is what we are not capturing in revenue, which is a very, very large amount of money.
And I did ask if anyone had quantitative data on that and they did not. They did say that they felt confident that they were able to build a rapport with the community. They were able to know neighborhoods a little bit better and more in-depth and that they felt that they had been able to pick up law strike revenue, but they could not give me any specific.
I don't doubt, I don't doubt you, but I'm not, I don't see any proof of that. You stated it, so I feel certain it's true.
Well, I can draw it down virtually any street, virtually any street, and find at least one, if not many. Improvements, additions, remodels. It never showed up on a building permit. And has not been caught on the tax rolls. Well. Okay.
But those should be, those should be caught every four years. So what you're really saying is that lag there, what you really should be measuring is the value of that lag time. Because they will be caught every four years.
Well, most of them would, most of them would. Anyone that's done a total interior rebuild on their house is not going to get. Unless the building permit. No, they're not pulling a building permit. Okay. They don't put a building permit, you only want to do on the outside because nobody will notice it what you do on the inside.
Okay, so here again though, we were just talking about, I'm just trying to keep things straight. We were just not talking about doing things remotely, we don't need to do drive-bys. So if we're doing things remotely, we're not going to pick up, we're certainly not going to pick up that somebody just repainted their living room and put up a new panel.
The assessors don't ever go inside anyway, so it's not basically anything inside.
No, and that's a good thing, however, everyone knows my feelings about it.
Well, in my understanding of perspective, I just, I need, I need something that shows me that it would make financial sense. And at this point, the gap is really large. You know, I know that fast-growth counties, I can well believe that it pays for it to keep that evaluation up. You know, in some cases, by doing it every year, we might, we might be losing some money because, you know.
I don't disagree with you.
So it's, I'm just, I'm having a, I'm having a hard time seeing my way forward on this. And I'm not, I don't, I don't have to take any strong position on it one way or the other.
Even if we did.
What are we getting for it?
Right, even if we get a four-year cycle, I believe that we could still be ahead of the game because, trying to actually be nice, but we would have, I believe that we would have much more competent individuals that actually cared about what they were doing and were builder rapport with people. And many people do things thinking that they're saving money by not permitting and everything else. And they don't realize that when they go to sell that house, there's a lot of people that are not going to be able to buy it because the banks are going to say, no, you have no permit on this basement whatsoever. You didn't get a building permit for your deck. You put this little addition you didn't get a permit for. So they're not going to be able to sell the house. So that's where a public relations piece of it would help to get things done to code. And that's just in my mind.
Well, the other part of this that I've started with, since we started talking about this a couple of years ago, was that what is the right staffing that you need? Assuming you could take advantage of some of the tools that Ted was talking about in terms of databases and mapping and technologies and building databases and all these kind of things. You know, with 20,000 parcels in the county, you know, a person and a half, for example, could, you know, even at relatively low piecework rates, could get through those 20,000, you know, in the course of a few months. If what they're doing is analytical in terms of using these databases. Now, when it comes to getting in a car and going visiting, whatever that frequency needs to look like, that's a different labor level. And that's why I'm especially curious about all these other functions. If you, and you might not be able to do this, but, but, you know, from a decision standpoint, if you could identify a staff, a person and a half, let me just pick for easy math, and say, your job is this and only this, and we're going to give you these tools to do it. It seems to me, I know 20,000 parcels sounds like a big number, but in fact, with the right tools, you can look at all of those, you know, in the course of a week, you could query every single piece of data about every one of those parcels and build reports and do all sorts of things. So I, there's another piece of this, I think, that we have to understand better before we come to some decision. Mark is right, on the surface, it looks like, you know, the cost differential is enormous. However, you know, I can't imagine that in the case of Louisa, for example, showing a staffing of, what is it, six and a half or seven, maybe including a part-timer, doing 33,000 parcels. I mean, you could almost go camp out only to those parcels, that's the parcel every day.
How many staffers do they have?
Seven.
They have six full-time and one part-time and they do physical inspections every three years.
I think that the staffing numbers are too high.
For the pure reassess the function.
Absolutely.
Your other, I'm not saying these people aren't busy, I'm sure they are, but they're doing a lot more than reassess. I don't know, but I don't know how you get at this, I don't know.
Well, I mean, if we have 20,000 parcels and 250 work days a year, that's 80 parcels a day.
Now, if you do it every two years, it's 40 persons.
Right, so.
Every three years, I mean, it is.
But if you take, if you throw common sense into it and the people that come in and get a building permit.
Let me ask a question, you have a sense of, when the contractor does this, what size team he's fielding to do this in a period of about, what, three months or four months?
They've got about five people.
How many?
About five.
He's doing all of them in, like, three, four months typically, right?
Well, it takes an entire year to do the whole county, because they visit each parcel.
So we hired five people, but we hired for one year. And how many people?
Well, the other, like, I've talked to probably other, about ten other localities similar to ours, and they all have maximum of three, no, um, minimum of two people.
Doing just reassess?
Yes.
Yeah. That's, that sounds more like the levels of life.
And, and when you're looking at, uh, the people, how many, uh, for people checking, uh, new construction, uh, throughout there, how many, uh, how much are we spending there? Maybe half a person or a quarter of a person?
Uh, we usually, there's usually one guy that comes back to do those.
And he's just, you're part-time?
Yes.
To, to look at the re, new constructions.
How often does he come back?
Um, whenever we get a good stack of-
Are you recalling me to come back now?
Yes.
What are they checking on new construction?
Um, they're based off of the building permits that we get. What do you mean?
Well, that's what I'm saying, we have a building permit that says, this is new construction of X number of square feet.
Right.
It's got a deck, and it's got this, and it's got that. Are they checking to see that that is what was built?
Um, they do go out and measure, because sometimes, you know, things are not accurate, or they may, the contractor sometimes doesn't give the exact measurements, so they go out and measure just to double-check and make sure that everything's correct.
If you have somebody who puts an addition on to a home, does that building permit get looked at by the assessor?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I think, um, we're, we're kind of at the end of our work session, but, for me, what I'd say is, we need lots more information before we can make another.
Oh, I agree, absolutely. The, uh-
I think we need to decide what it is we want to do, and then go, then try to figure out what that's going to cost us, what we're going to get.
And, and we need to find out, is there, is there a minimum requirement that you have to do, either by state code or otherwise, that says, you, you must do these things, or use this process, or this frequency, or whatever, whatever those requirements are, uh, that would impact the cost of the gas. Hopefully, we can do it faster than seven years. Is that exactly how long it's taken us to get this done? It's been kicked off early. You did a good job stimulating the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, board members, we'll, uh, follow up with you on some, what we need to move this forward. So it sounds like the answer is continue to explore, not no, but not yes.
It's hard to-
It's hard to do, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I didn't penetrate.
All right, thank you, Stella. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All set to go, Allison?
Yes, sir.
All right. All meetings are over, if you would join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see no changes to the agenda, do you have any?
Oh. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, um, under new business, um, item C, uh, courthouse portraits. And, under, um, old business, if we could, um, add, um, litter. Item C.
All right, with those two additions, is there anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. All right, special presentations and appearances, the presentation of the Garvis Huff Awards, response.
I'm trying to keep my mouth from blocking my glasses, but I can see, you guys mind if I take it off?
No, it's okay.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, as each of you know, this past year has put a damper on any, excuse me, many events due to COVID restrictions. Our Garvis Huff Award ceremony was no different, as restrictions were put in place the Friday before our annual Tuesday night event, so we had to postpone. Um, over the past year, we've been trying to figure out a way to recognize the nominees and the winners in each category, and still remain compliant with group restrictions. It's definitely been a challenge, and so I asked if we could formally recognize, um, some of our nominees at one of our meetings, so here we are tonight. Initially, the Orange Review, um, will be publishing all of our nominees' introductions that we would normally use the night of the event, so that everybody who is nominated will be recognized. Um, the winners will also be announced in that same article, and so we want to say a big thank you to Jeff Poole and the Orange Review for working with us on the project. Um, so again, we have two of our nominees here this evening, we're supposed to have three, um, he had something come up at college and couldn't come home, so um, I'm still going to read his introduction, because everything he does is amazing, but he is just not here this evening. Um, and I'm going to give their introduction, which will provide a quick synopsis as to why they were nominated. Um, each of them goes above and beyond for others and for their community, and I'm excited to share their achievements with you this evening. So the first person I'm going to have up is Taylor Quaintance. Come on up, Ms. Taylor. If you want to just stand right here, they're going to stare at you for a minute. Um, Taylor was nominated as a seventh grader, she's now an eighth grader at Locust Grove Middle School, and was nominated in the areas of leadership, courage, compassion, and service. Taylor's a member of the National Junior Honor Society, and she's participated in the National Geographic Geography Bee and is a member of the Travel Chorus. Beyond school, she was nominated to participate in the Junior National Young Leaders Conference. She's an active member of her church youth group and is learning Irish dance. Taylor holds herself to a very high standard, not only in her schoolwork, but in her determination. She set a goal to raise money for St. Jude's, and as an ambitious young lady, she rode her bicycle fifty-three miles from Richmond to Williamsburg to raise funds to honor those seeking treatment at St. Jude's. She exceeded her goal and had a positive impact on the community around her. Taylor has an impact on individuals when doing things quietly in a reserved manner. She is a role model to the youth of Orange County. She shows one can be involved in many things with sincerity and determination to accomplish goals for both self and community. She's gained the courage to speak about things that make a difference and matter. She has grown as a competent leader and an example of what a student can do to influence their community in a positive and productive manner. What Taylor does not know this evening is that she is actually the recipient of the middle school award. We kept it as a surprise for her. So, unfortunately, it's been a year, but I do want to provide you with your award.
Thank you.
If I can get it open here. And it reads, the Orange County Youth Commission presents the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty Garvis Huff Memorial Outstanding Youth Award, grades six to eight, to Christian acquaintance, in recognition of your exemplary service to the community of Orange County, Virginia, March seventeenth, twenty twenty, which was supposed to be our night that we were going to present the awards. So, here you go, sweetheart, I hope that was a good surprise. Yes. Her mom and I have been keeping it a secret, that's why I pulled her into the stairwell, saying, it's a little secret, right? So, so you guys, Taylor. Um, our high school nominee, um, is Joshua Lyon, he was the, the one that could not be here tonight, but I still wanted to read his introduction, because he just is an amazing young man, I personally know him um, as a counselor for 4H camp, and he's just amazing with the kids, so. Joshua was nominated while a senior at Orange County High School, he now attends George Mason University, where he studied government and international politics. While at OCHS, he was a very active team, both in and outside of school. His school-related achievements and participation included creating a student-run spirit committee with the goal to bring school unity and spirit to Orange County. President of the twenty-first Leadership Committee and Spirit Committee. President of the Varsity Club, cap- captain of both the varsity baseball and swim teams, a National Honor Society member, and a Boys State member, which is handpicked by the VFW. Outside of school, Joshua was a lead volunteer for State Senator Bryce Reeves' reelection campaign. A congressional intern for Senator Mike Enzie, and a petty officer second class in the United States Naval Sea Cadet Corps, all while still managing to work part-time. Through his tireless work at OCHS, he was able to overcome resistance to school spirit and bring people together of various backgrounds, religions, races, ethnicities, interests, cliques, Democrats, Republicans, sexualities, economic backgrounds, and genders who often had different outlooks on life to find a common bond. And he did it through pride in school, education, community, and sports. His nomination form stated Joshua was a rare jewel and a natural leader, he is, he is of high moral character and achieved success in all that he puts his mind to. So we will be sure to get his award to him. Um, my next nominee, if she'd like to come on up. This is Ms. Mary Catherine Corker. She is nominated based on courage, service, and leadership. She is a dedicated advocate for the growth and development of youngsters. She not only spends her days working with students, she continues into the evenings and weekends. She's a very active, she is very active in various activities, including the 4H Outdoor Venture Club, Locust Grove Athletics, and the LG EMS Beautification Club, to name a few. She is also involved in her church through Operation Shoebox and other community activities. Ms. Corker is quick to assist any student, she will find a way for student to stay after school to assist them in their academic success, regardless of grade level or the subject material, she will find a solution. She is always utilizing her skills and knowledge to the betterment of others in and out of the school environment. She uses acts of kindness for teachable moments about the environment, agriculture, and various other topics of interest. A major challenge that Ms. Corker faced was a mid-year change of the program used to create the individualized educational plans. She handled this change with grace and was able to learn the new system with very little official instruction to keep all of her students on course and minimize any future issues. It is evident that Ms. Corker has a personal passion to share her experience and knowledge with others, and to always be aware that everyone is considered remembered and cared for. So, on behalf of the Youth Commission and the Orange County Office on Youth, I'll let these go off, so I was so scared they would get messed up. Uh, the Orange County Youth Commission presents the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty Outstanding Youth Advocate Award to Mary Catherine Corker, in recognition of your exemplary service to the community of Orange County, Virginia, March seventeenth, twenty twenty. Thank you very much. So thank you to each of you for letting me recognize these amazing individuals, the, um, rest of the nominees will be in the paper, so please read everything that they're doing, it's amazing, and I truly enjoy reading it every year, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Senator Johnson?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is new business, the Resolution Budget Moral Obligation and Support Agreement for Broadband Authority. Ms. President.
Members of the board, um, this item is a request for approval of a resolution that would, um, approve your support, uh, for a VRA financing by the Broadband Authority. As you know, the Broadband Authority has been seeking, um, a path forward for continued capital construction and deployment of the broadband network throughout the county, and after reviewing a number of options, has decided to pay in the VRA, Virginia Resources Authority's spring financing pool. Um, a draft of the resolution is in your packet, and it outlines the terms of support, um, between Orange County and the OCBA, and it authorizes the Chairman of the Board or the County Administrator to execute that support agreement on behalf of the county. Um, even though the Broadband Authority's revenues are expected to be sufficient to pay the necessary debt service on the bonds, the support agreement does offer a non-binding moral obligation of the county, um, to fund any deficiencies that arise as the Broadband Authority goes forward. Um, the Board is not empowered to make binding commitments, as you know, for future boards, um, however, the support agreement does declare the Board's intent to make appropriations for the bonds in the event that it's necessary, and hereby recommends, um, that future boards do likewise. Um, I did want to mention that VRA ha, and this is in your, your documentation, VRA does have the ability to intercept state aid that would be, um, coming to the county in the event that the Broadband Authority didn't make the payments, and the county didn't make the payments, that would be their recourse. Any questions on that?
Does VRA require this?
VRA does, yes.
Other discussion? For motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is a renewal of the contract for change healthcare for EMS billing and collection services. Hi there, Amanda, how are you?
Hi, I think we're actually down on five B, the award of contract for audit services, new business?
Oh, yes ma'am, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Um, in December of twenty twenty, we released a solicitation seeking proposals from certified public accountants to audit financial statements for Orange County Government, Schools, and Social Services. For the fiscal year, current fiscal year ending June thirtieth, and for, um, for subsequent fiscal years after. We received six responses. After staff reviewed these responses, we held interviews with the top two. And overall, we feel that PB Mayor's offers a professional detailed prompt audit service, and, um, we have previously used PB Mayor's and have a great relationship with them. Um, it's recommended that the Board of Supervisors approve a contract with PB Mayor's for one year with the possibility of four one-year renewals. Funding has been allocated in the Financial Professional Services line.
Thank you, Amanda. A motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, this covers the schools, the government, and Department of Social Services. Do we have separate contracts for the Broadband Authority and the EDA?
The Broadband Authority, it's on, it's on order beginning next year, as I understand it, because we were part of this year.
All right.
So there's a transition year for the Broadband.
Correct.
And in the past, the frame, the EDA has utilized our pricing to basically have a, a subsequent agreement with the number we contract with, there was just about five or six thousand here.
So the county, you tell, however, the EDA pays for its, for its, uh, audit. So the Broadband Authority will have to do that too.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would abstain. Okay. Good. Passes on three to one abstention. All right. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Five C, courthouse portraits, Mr. Johnson?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some months ago, we were kind of contacted by the Circuit Court Judge, Judge Franzine, about, um, putting the old, uh, courtroom back into service, uh, because of the flu issues. And, at that time, um, we, uh, with some input from the judge, we looked at sort of a, that room's been closed up for, what, probably about fifteen years now? I mean, occasionally somebody goes in there, but it's, it's, it's been used for about fifteen years. So we looked at doing a little sprucing up, but we repainted it and, and, um, did some things of that nature. But we also, uh, did a, sort of a reappraisal of the, uh, extensive portraiture that is in the courthouse. And, um, we have decided to make, uh, some additions. And, one change, I think the Board has approved the change of the central portrait, I'm unclear, if that's your understanding. We are going to add, uh, a total of eight people. We are going to add a total of eight people to the courthouse portrait collection. For one, we are going to add Captain Andrew Maples, one of the Tuskegee Airmen, and was lost in a mission over the Adriatic Sea in June 26, 1944. He'll make a nice addition. Currently in the courthouse, we have a picture of a young man named Severn Marcellus Nottingham, Jr. He should be in there for his name alone. His remains are in the South Pacific off Savo Island, where he died on November 13, 1942, during the first naval battle of the Lleida Canal. So with the addition of Captain Maples, we'll have the Pacific Theater and the European Theater both represented and deservedly so. One other thing is, I did warn the chairman, this might take a while. We often look at history as being something that's got at least a quarter inch of dust on it, but the fact of the matter is, we make history every day. What the Board does here today is history. Nobody will care about it much until 50 years from now. They might think about it as history then, but history's made every day. But the courthouse portraits have remained static since, for about a half a century. The last person who was added was Sheriff Maupin, back somewhere around 1970. So one of the things we're doing here is kind of updating this to bring in a lot of folks from the last 80 to 100 years. So to that end, in addition to Captain Maples, S. Paige Higginbotham, who was a seven-term Commonwealth Attorney and also served two terms as state delegate, Armin Roe Wall, who was the longest-serving member of the Board of Supervisors from 1948 to 1979, R. Lindsey Gordon, who served seven terms on the Board of Supervisors from 1964 to 1991. The present collection is strong on Commonwealth Attorneys, as you might expect, but it does not have any Commissioner of Revenues or Treasurers. So we are going to address that by adding Joseph Samuels, who served eight terms as Commissioner of Revenue from 1956 to, I believe, 1983 or 1984. I have to nail that down. And the first Treasurer was a man who served for nine terms. He served from 1912 to 1946, and his name was Oswald Beechman Watson, and he went by OB, which I think we can understand. The school board is not currently represented, so we're going to take care of that. Marcel Coleman was a teacher in the Orange County Public School System for about 35 years. She served on the Orange County Council, and she served, I believe, three terms, 12 years, on the school board. And Judith P. Carter, that we all knew as Judy, she served for many years on the school board. Because of the situation with the flu, I haven't made it in to go through minutes to find out exactly when she served. She served two different terms, two different stretches, but she was on the school board for approximately 20 years. She was also on the Electoral Board, served as the Secretary of the Electoral Board. And so Judy will join the circle over at the courthouse. So this will be a nice update. We actually will have a number of folks from the middle and latter part of the 20th century as well as the opening years of the 21st century. And we are in the process of acquiring some paintings of these folks. I think we've already, I think the painting of Mr. Maples has already been done. The one other substantive change, if you call it that, currently, the sort of pride of place at the courthouse belongs to Mr. Governor Spotswood. And so what we've decided to do is replace him with Mr. Madison, who was obviously President and a very important person here in Orange County. So he will move behind the judge. Judge Franzen was very much in favor of that, and we will find another location for Mr. Spotswood. We haven't decided quite where, but it will be somewhere appropriate. And everyone else will, we're going to move them around a little bit. We've repainted, so we can kind of move things around. We're going to move some of them back into the two rooms to have room for everybody. There's two small rooms called main courtrooms, and some of them will be in there. That is where we at, we are at, and...
These are all additions, they're not replacements, they're stock out already?
Nobody, other than Governor Spotswood, no one is being replaced. It's just, yeah, I think it's, you know, those portraits have been there for a long time, and, you know, even though some of them are a little bit obscure, most of them are fairly well known if you start digging into them, but they're scarier to us now because after all, they've got a quarter inch of dust on them, so.
I would personally thank you for putting all the effort into this. I mean, this is, you've been doing this with regard to Orange County history for a long time, but I think this was a significant addition to the courthouse and to the recognition of the citizens of Orange County. Thank you.
Absolutely. Very much. And County Administrator, Mr. Voorhees, has been very helpful in doing this along.
But I know where the energy came from.
Well. Energy and me aren't often coupled together.
And on that note, gentlemen, we will move on to the next item. I like your closing statement, Mr. Johnson.
All right. Old business. First item under old business is to close the public hearing, the reason in 21-01. Ms. Thornton, did we have, I know we have one comment in our board packet, or any others received?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Chairman. Allison may have some additional information, but we didn't receive anything through the planning office.
We only received the one that's included in your packet.
Okay. Any questions on the summary from the Planning Commission? Ms. Thornton, do you have anything to offer?
No, sir. Nothing additional to the presentation I made at your March 9 meeting. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Thornton? Come, go, and go. In that case, I would entertain a motion for either approval or denial.
Sandra, just one question. The one comment we received had to do with possibly putting a limit on the, how late... Is there presently anything in the proposal that deals with the closing time?
No, sir, there isn't.
I know that noise wasn't addressed. Excuse me. I know that the noise was addressed.
Right.
And that was a concern when you went to offer.
No, I was just asking, Sandra, if that was addressed at all in the proposal at
No, sir, there wasn't, it wasn't addressed in the proposal. I think we did, you know, touch on that. The applicants are present. If you have a specific question for them about that.
John, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, the one, the one comment that we got is suggesting a closing time of 10:00 PM. Do you have a reaction to that? You have any comment on that?
Sure. For private events, and if we have a wedding or something, we wouldn't particularly love to have a cap on it, but in the state of Virginia, a craft brewery can't be open past midnight. But our normal operating hours were intended to be until 10:00 PM, as, like I said, for normal business hours. But we had addressed last time that any outdoor music or anything outside would be inside after 10:00 PM. So it's really about 10:00 PM, the midnight window, which would be indoors only for private events.
Okay, so you're saying outdoors 10, but indoors midnight? Is that what you're saying?
As I said, our hours, our normal hours of operation will be until 10:00 PM, but if we have a private event such as a wedding, we are allowed by the state of Virginia with the ABC to stay open until midnight. We cannot stay open past midnight. So 12:00 AM would be the latest on any occasion that we would ever be open for a private event.
I, I'm comfortable with that. I think, I think that's, I think that's actually, you know, near enough to what the commenter said, but I think we're, I think we could.
All right. Mr. Frame, Mr. White, any comments? If not, in that case, I would entertain a motion.
I would approve.
I'll second. Further discussion? All right. Roll call, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Frame.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall is absent, and Mr. White.
Aye.
Box is 4-0.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
All right. Next on old business would be litter.
Yes, our old friend litter, which we have touched on over and over over the years. And I don't, it's anecdotal, but it seems like to me it's gotten a lot worse here just recently. And, you know, to the point where I'm starting to get some folks talking to me about it. And, you know, they make some very good points, which is we spend a lot of money on a tourism department and on facilitating agritourism and so forth and so on, and it's really kind of a bad deal for people to drive here, get to Orange County, and there's trash up and down the road. Now, there's probably trash up and down the road on our way here before they get to Orange. I don't think we're the only ones, but if we are their destination, or if they're passing through, and you'd like for them to stop and spend a few dollars, then it seems to mean a behoove us to try to address the issue of this, dare I say, pandemic of litter that we seem to be dealing with. I would, I would like to suggest a couple of things. One, that we, I believe we've raised the fine a while back. Then what did we raise it to?
Have to look, I don't remember, but...
Okay.
You're saying a fine?
What I would suggest that we do is invest in some signage. I suspect the state has signage that we can, we can arrange to have that done. It may cost us a few dollars, I don't know, but if we have to have it done, something which says, you know, whatever the fine is, $500,000. And the other thing is to, you know, we've had the litter committee for a long time, and that's well and good for certain things.
Planning the tire event, planning the recycle event, planning the hazardous waste events.
But I think we need, I think, I think we need to invest a few dollars in actually having people go out and clean up the roads. Now, we're using the workforce, and they do a great job, but they, they can't be out there all the time on every road.
No, they're not out there right now due to the pandemic.
Right, I think they're starting up again.
They are starting. And one other thing that we had parked on a couple of years ago and fell apart just before the pandemic is, we were looking at getting a van from the jail to have a dedicated workforce. And we actually had gotten to the point where we had a dedicated workforce crew for working on county projects, you know, airport parks and everything.
Right.
And then we had a Saturday crew that was doing nothing but litter picking. I would be more than happy to pursue talking to the superintendent down at the jail and see if we could get a crew dedicated more than just the weekend, if he has eligible people. And we have a van that is currently sitting idle that was procured from jail, that we could put additional supplies and everything in to help support that. So that might be a very inexpensive way to get started with this, that sounds.
I think there are some funds for the litter control committee that look at whether, they're not a lot of money, but for buying such things as the bags and other supplies.
Yes. And like Mr. Johnson said, I think we would be well-served to invest some more money into it. And we had discussed at one time, I believe, $2,500 fine.
Colonial Beach, you enter the little town, you see a sign that's larger than even one of those stood behind the County Administrator there. That's what it is, $2,500. I have an experience for someone, but my understanding is they're pretty aggressive about it. They mean what they say on their sign.
I know there's a gentleman at the back of the room that would be ecstatic to write one of those fines.
That's the thing, it has to rub it on that.
I don't know, is there a limit as to what it could be about?
Well, I was just looking with the state law, so the state law says we can actually make it a misdemeanor with up to 12 months in jail, a fine up to $2,500.
So what do we, where is it now?
We, I think we have it as a class three misdemeanor, which is like a $250 fine. This, we can actually make it a class one misdemeanor.
Well, we did raise it. I thought we raised it up to higher than...
I can't find that. Maybe we did, but I could find out. I'll double check it.
Okay, I believe we had the discussion of doing that, and so...
I think we did it.
We might have.
But maybe not.
Yeah, I can't find it in our crew, so I'll look some more this evening after.
Okay, we're done.
But we can make it a misdemeanor that's punishable up to 12 months in jail or a fine of $2,500.
The other issue with this is, it's actually Mr. Frame's district. Fortunately, I tried over the line. We have a situation where there's a number of businesses that, there's two roads that go through right there at 320. Problem is, those are private roads, so the sheriff's office has no authority to do any writing there. However, the middle of the road on one of them is in, not the Park Service, but the Civil War Trust or somebody's name. It's possible that we could work with them to get some sort of a fine there because tractor-trailers, I've witnessed it numerous times, they park and they just empty their cabs while they're sitting there. And that is one of the main gateways to the county, so, yeah, maybe we could do something to work with those businesses down there. I know that both shoots and McDonald's pay a litter tax, so the attitude from both of them has been, well, we pay our fair share, so we're not worried about it, which is not a real neighborly attitude to have.
Well, yeah, but litter tax is like $10 a year. Twenty, twenty for something.
But they have been approached a number of times and really had no interest in...
Well, could, would it be okay with the Board to have Tom find out what it currently is and maybe, maybe come back to the Board with some options, and then also if we could find out about the signage, how that, how we do that? Do that?
I'd also like to hear from the sheriff's department in terms of enforcement. I'd like to get some idea of what the impact would be or their ability, if you will, to enforce it, because I like the idea of putting up a sign, but I don't like the idea of having a sign we can't enforce.
Well, I mean, one of the problems with enforcement in a county is your odds of actually catching somebody is pretty small. In town, it's a little bit, little bit easier, but, you know, out in county, quickly, it's very difficult.
But I believe it'd only take one or two tickets.
Yes.
To send it through.
The supporters could, would be aware of it. All right, that's, that's all I had on that.
Any initial thoughts, sir?
Well, I wasn't here to comment on anything.
But you were, you're in our room.
You're here.
But I, I mean, I will say, Mr. Johnson's right, it's extremely hard to catch them when they're in the county. You know, the deputies that we have are generally either running the calls or investigating crimes themselves. You could actually witness them throw the stuff at the car. So we get them, but it's not near the number that would account for the garbage that you're seeing on the side of the road. So, you know, it would, it would be more or less, I mean, we deal with litter on an individual basis. When people call us and say somebody dumped a bunch of stuff on the side of the road and we deal with those fairly frequently. Um, the, the McDonald's bags and stuff that go out the windows.
Do you ever catch the people that have dumped this stuff on the side of the road? All it would take is, and if we could do something with signage, uh, you know, do a PR campaign that when that person got a $2,500 fine, make sure that the news media gets a hold of it. It would quickly reduce.
And try and communicate to the judge to actually use that fine?
Well, we might be able to work with Judge Franzine on that.
Well, he's circuit court and it would be a misdemeanor.
Thanks, Mike. You can go off to your max. All right. So Tom, you have?
I, I, yeah.
Very good. All right, Department Director, Constitutional Officer reports? No? County attorneys?
No report.
And county administrators report, a presentation of the recommended budget, and then the authorization of budget impact rate. Mr. Gordis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and we're gonna run through a quick presentation here. Um, I appreciate the work of the Budget Guidance Committee, uh, Mr. White, Mr. Johnson, that worked extensively with staff to formulate something we could all advance to you as our approach to fiscal '22. Uh, and I certainly want to thank all the department heads for submitting uh, necessary information so we can work with it. Uh, thanks Stephanie Stra for her work in the CIP. And number one, thank Glenda Bradley for her extensive work to bring things into balance for us and, and also to help me with the communication and presentation. So thanks very much, Glenda. So without further ado, this will be pretty quick, um, your FY '22 proposed budget. Uh, we began with the board's budget philosophy, uh, based on their strategic vision of a vibrant economy, effective reflective government and sustainable land use. And then we certainly drive to scale our government appropriately and look for new revenue to be based on natural growth rather than just raising revenues. And certainly we have to balance competing interests. Uh, this budget holds the major real estate and personal property tax rates steady. Uh, it incorporates the expenditures associated with the new public safety facility, including utilities, operating costs, additional maintenance and custodial staff. Uh, we realigned some of our operational expenditures into the Fire EMS fund, uh, which is, this will be our second year of using that fund. Uh, we do not fully fund fire, volunteer operating, uh, support, but we do support the, uh, the equipment replacement schedule, get started on that. Uh, and we also lend attention to our expanded communications capability to reach out to, to public through social media engagement to build public trust and perception of value for tax dollars spent. Some other details, um, we work to reestablish a more robust planning development services function, elevate the human resources function, uh, leverage maximum use of state funding for wage adjustments that came recently out of the General Assembly, including support for teacher salaries uh, at the 5% wage increase. And then we have some additional funding for some requested positions, part years that we will continue, and then some additional support for jointly operated facilities and external entities that are detailed in your, your budget. So for the tax rates for the proposed fiscal year, everything remains the same except for the highlighted area, which is really just an oversight from the breakout of the Fire EMS fund in the previous year. Uh, that is personal property taxed at the real estate rate. And so it should have been 72 cents total for mobile homes. We taxed it at 61% last year, which was an artificial dip. It should come back to 72, which is what the total combined real estate rate is for regular, uh, non-mobile homes or regular real estate, which is 61 cents for real estate and 11 for Fire EMS. So that's, that's held steady.
So Ted, if we go back to 2019, the mobile homes, at that time, we're, we're at the 80.4.
That's correct.
So they kind of got a.
They got a one-year big break.
They got a one-year goof of break there.
That's right. Net total revenue from that source across the county is $4,000. So it's spread across all owners. It probably will be pretty negligible to any one, one owner. Uh, as for the tax base for FY '21, uh, we base this on new construction totals of approximately $51.8 million. Slightly less than 59.3 for FY '20. Uh, we think that's just a result of some slowdown in the initial stages of the COVID era. Uh, but things certainly picked back up. The total estimated revenue for all categories increased by $880,000. Uh, 700,000 in the general fund, 180 in the Fire EMS fund. One penny on the tax rate at a collection rate of 96.5%, generates $461,641. And then there we have a consolidated budget comparison, that's all, all funds. And what you'll notice at the very bottom on the total for all funds, it's actually in FY '22, a $9 million decrease from the prior year. That's an artificial, um, situation that's driven by the fact that we had a significant financing for capital projects last year, so you pull that out and, and see a slight increase this year. Uh, where does the money come from? A big chunk from the state, that's mostly state education aid, however. So, um, that's why that big green pie piece is the biggest, um, the biggest local source is property tax. Where does it go? Well, related to that, it mostly goes to schools. So 54% to schools and then the rest, uh, the biggest chunk to general fund. Uh, and that's illustrated out of this chart. Debt service is only 4%. And then there's a tracking of local expense history by function. You can see the education is the biggest piece, climbing along steadily. Public safety, number two, and that really aligns with the board's priorities that we support. Public education and public safety is our top priorities. You can see on the far right side, debt service, uh, it looks fairly steady. We have a little blip with, uh, uh, you know, some activities a few years back, but you can see we've really tried to maintain an appropriate, uh, level of debt service across our activities. There's some policy-driven ways that we address our budget. Uh, the Budget Guidance Committee helps us realize those and the board was involved in adopting those policies. And so one of them is to have a, a, a limitation on the burden on, on the residential tax base or the real estate tax base, and we want to keep, uh, the tax base, uh, the, the property owners from paying more than 24% of our total, uh, revenues. And you could see this chart shows that we've, we've kept it pretty steady along the years. And in fact, it's, um, it's at 21%, which is a little bit less than when we started this chart. Uh, another policy that we, uh, enforce is to make sure we have an appropriate level of, of capital spending uh, because, uh, current savings on capital dollars does not equal real savings. It just ends up being deferred maintenance. And so the board set a policy back in fiscal '15, uh, to have a base funding amount of $10,613,000. And we have exceeded that, uh, base level by 1.8 million, almost 1.9 million. Uh, and this illustrates our, our conformance with that. Uh, we also have policies around fund balance. Always want to have some rainy day savings, make sure you can operate when things get a little, uh, uh, uncertain. And this was certainly one of those years. And so we've got our chart here illustrating that we have, uh, our 15% fund balance. Uh, we also have an additional 3% uh, rainy day fund, if you want to call it that, and those are illustrated on our chart. Moving on to, um, one other issue that's a little bit unique. Um, we do have the opportunity to add into our advertisement of this budget the, uh, estimated, uh, new revenue from the American Rescue Plan, uh, Act, which is recently passed. Uh, we've been getting notices that that was going to be coming our way. We do not have a spending plan for that yet. If you recall, the CARES Act funds we did receive, uh, the board, um, in its desire to, to kind of expedite things, included a public hearing, uh, at that time, and we brought a spending plan back to the board. If, if the board would like to do it the same way, uh, we would advertise, uh, our budget with that estimated revenue amount in. That would avoid us having to do a separate spending plan, a, a separate public hearing and advertisement. Uh, we would bring you a spending plan before we did any of that. Um, either that or it would be with your appropriation action, which comes, uh, in a few weeks. And that is our presentation. We are available to answer your questions.
Do we have any idea when that money might show up?
There is a, an understanding that sometime within, I think it's within 30 to 60 days of the passage, we would get our first tranche, it would be the two tranches we're hearing. And then the second tranche would be all, about a year later. So, so it sounds like about 3.7, 3.6 million coming soon, and then the other about a year out. And we would set this up as a separate project, well, project fund within our overall, all, you know, COVID fund that we're maintaining.
All right, good, good presentation.
Thank you.
And nine B.
And so, Mr. Chairman?
Action there. On that B, it's action, okay.
That's correct. If, if, if the board's comfortable with, um, adding in the anticipated, uh, you know, relief act funding, then the version that you have in front of you that says revised 3/23/21 with American Rescue Plan Act, uh, should be under table. Uh, that would be the ones we would, uh, we would recommend that we advertise. Uh, and, uh, illustrious clerk will make that happen and we'll get it, get it advertised a couple of times before we, uh, have the public here.
Source of that estimate, uh, is that?
We've.
Semi-official at this point?
It's semi-official, we've received it from, uh, uh, VACO through NACO, uh, from Congresswoman Spamberger's office and from some other sources that all sort of triangulate around about the same number.
So, so never we can use it as?
Certainly, may, may have to be slightly adjusted or amended, you know, down the road, but it's big enough, it's sufficiently, it, it, it's accurate enough to use as a, as a revenue estimate, uh, for, for official purposes.
Any other questions?
Can I ask? I would move that we, uh, proceed to advertise the proposed fiscal '22 annual budget and the 2021 tax rate for public hearings as presented.
Sir.
All right, any further discussion? Mr. Thompson?
Like a roll call?
Yes, I will.
Um, Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Marshall is absent. And just for the record to reflect, this would be the ad with the American Rescue Plan Act per, or, um, revenue estimate.
That is your right.
Okay.
Yes.
Board comment, Mr. Frame?
Yeah, uh, sat in on a couple of Zoom meetings on the Arcus Alert system. This is the attempt to try to bring, uh, behavioral health into those calls which usually are responded to by the police or the sheriff's department uh, in terms of providing, uh, some other kinds of input as opposed to just law enforcement for such things as, uh, substance abuse, uh, mental health, uh, people who are mentally challenged trying to do that. We have, uh, Jason as, uh, one of the Orange County's representatives. Uh, Chris O'Hale and, and Chris Corbett, Corrigan are also there. The first meeting, uh, the second meeting where we began to get into issues does not look like this is going to be easy. Even, uh, even such things as trying to use the Smart 911 where we have some information on, uh, on individual, individuals. There are three of the five counties that are dealing with it. The community, the Rappahannock Rapid and Community Services Board is sort of sponsoring, is sort of hosting this, uh, meeting. And these are to be done by a regional, and there's also state activities going. But, uh, you know, there's just a lot of problems and, and I think that it's going to be a real challenge to try to work with this. But they're meeting twice a month and since I can do it from my desk, uh, I try to sit in on them. Anyway, it's, uh, it'll be interesting to see what, what happens as we get further down this.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Oh. A board comment that, that I would, would hope leads to, that's county administrator, uh, talking with the, uh, new planning director, uh, looking into, um, a way that we might address of a, a sort of a, what I think is kind of a strange aspect of Arizona ordinance. Uh, you all are probably shocked to note that there are strange parts of Arizona ordinance.
Mr. White?
You know, we, we currently don't allow second dwelling on property except for, uh, a, what's known of, uh, as a mother-in-law cottage. I don't know why father-in-laws aren't allowed there. And they have to be like 800 feet, square feet or less. And, you know, if somebody has 75 acres, uh, why on earth is it county care? If they build a guest cottage that's a thousand square feet, does it, does it matter? You can build a house that's 20,000 square feet and have 50 bedrooms in it. So why not build a, a, why not allow a, with a, with significant, with sufficient acreage? I don't think we want, uh, two-acre lots with two houses on them because that would kind of kick in the head the whole idea of the two-acre lot. But, um, I, I just wonder if we can't look at a way of addressing that. We don't want to open Pandora's box. Um, Pandora wouldn't like it, for one thing. But, uh, you know, we, we don't, we don't want to get into somebody being cute and building 10 houses and renting them out and all that kind of stuff. But there's got to be some kind of middle ground, some way to address this where someone with a large parcel of land could add a second dwelling and, and, and have it be larger than 800 square feet, which is a fairly small dwelling.
You're welcome to that committee, sir.
Hmm? So, um, it would, it would just be my request that the county administrator maybe talk to the planning director about that. That's not, uh, I don't, I don't think it's going to be his top priority when he comes to work tomorrow morning. But, um, I think it's, you know, it's, it's something that has come up repeatedly and citizens usually kind of scratch their head when you explain what the rule is. So.
One of the very few quirks that he has.
Yeah, it's one of the few. It's going to be my last one to take care of.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. It, it is interesting, your Pandora reference. I, I have seen jurisdictions when looking at this type of issue, uh, the unintended consequences do flow from that and, uh, And so looking at it comprehensively, I think is a good thought. I do know that just even yesterday at the Economic Development Group meeting, we got some real estate market updates that indicated how desperately in need of available housing we really are in our region. There just, there's just not enough supply. And our businesses will often talk about how it's challenging for their workforce. And so some of the zoning rules might be useful in helping to address some of those issues. Definitely worth looking at. I imagine the size was in fact put in place to try to prevent people from really building two fully marketable homes on the same lot. We may not have the same thoughts about that or the same community values about that at this time. And a lot of those restrictions were inherited from a different time. So it certainly makes sense to think about this as a strategic reason.
Well, one of the things you get into is you actually start encouraging behavior that is counter to what you're presumably trying to accomplish. So when you force a landowner, who owns 75 acres, you force them to.
Subdivide.
Subdivide. And sell two acres to somebody to put a house on. And it's going to be right out on the road. Whereas if we allowed them to build an accessory house, it may well be a very nice house that's backed up in the trees. And so the, you know, you're actually causing some of the problems that you think you're solving.
Eight hundred square feet is pretty darn small.
Well, it's small, particularly if you are, and I mean, you know, in a way, this is kind of a first world problem. I mean, you're definitely going to have wealthier people that own large tracts of land. And, you know, to a wealthier person, 800 square feet is a pretty small house. So, you know, it would, but in and from the sort of preserving the rural nature of the county, it would, I think it makes more sense to have two houses on a 50-acre lot rather than selling off little chunks of land as the person.
It keeps another one older.
Yep. I don't have a, I don't really have the answer. I'm hoping that somebody else does.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. White?
Speaking of Pandora's box, now that it's open, I continue to get feedback, I'll call it, on our recycling situation. I mentioned the County Administrator yesterday, another round of input. I think we probably need, and maybe a work session is a place to start this discussion. It's pretty clear that the recycling market has changed. The demand for a lot of these materials has changed. And I think we find ourselves in a situation, at least using our current strategy, we're left not solving a problem, not really contributing to a solution to the problem the way we'd like to. And so maybe we need to rethink it, re-educate the public, make some other decisions about how we go about it. I don't, as much, I certainly do not have the answer. But I'm hearing enough from really people that are sincere about wanting to do the right thing and be part of the solution and being very frustrated, either because of the inadequacies of our facilities or not understanding, you know, how this gets treated once it leaves us, these kind of things. So had Mark not opened this Pandora's box, I might not have gone there today. I just couldn't resist. Again, I don't have the solutions. And I'd like to get in on our work plan to learn more about it, get some input into what actually does happen. And maybe even, you know, do we need to take a different path?
I think the, as you say, the first part of that is saying, well, what is the market out there? What is the situation? What is the, what's going on? What's it costing us? Just some of that information might give us a hint as to whether there's any potential solutions.
It may also be helpful to read Mr. Borde's monthly letter, magazine, that some of the statistical facts were published in there just to give everyone a better idea of what it is costing us and that it's really not a feasible solution at this time. Might help because I'm getting a lot of the same questions and concerns.
One of the things we have not done is we haven't said recycling's mandatory. And when I see these big batches of cardboard going into the compactor, I get frustrated, recognizing they're going into the landfill and that's one of the areas where there's actually some money to be made.
Well, and that could be part of the solution is that we've identified, for example, avenues that can be pulled out and separately disposed of. And we actually get a little bit of revenue from that. I don't think it's very much in core. But we might have to treat, you know, recycling as, not all recyclables are created the same. And so we recognize that in some cases we can make it work and there's a market and so forth. And others, a different answer maybe is required. I don't, I'm certainly no expert in the topic, but I think we do need to learn more about it and see what is realistic in terms of how to do this.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, I've got a couple of things. One, I want to, I know we have mentioned them before, but Orange Family Physicians, the schools, school system, and our fire and EMS have been doing an absolutely phenomenal job with the COVID clinic administering shots. They've been very organized, very, just very polite, very caring about everybody that's been going through those. And I just want to say thank you again, especially Orange Family Physicians.
Also, Mr. Williams, thank you. We had talked, I believe, to the last meeting about not getting minutes from different boards and commissions and everything. She jumped right on that. And I think we're just about up to date on all of them now. And if we're not, it falls on the border commissions.
Yeah, no, I've checked it, but I got her email. I did a quick check. It looks like things are in much better shape. I just think that a lot of times I store this stuff in developing paper. And if I could keep it on the county server, it saves me storage space.
Yep, absolutely. So thank you very much, Ken. Just a side note on SUPs. It does appear that we're going to start getting what I would call influx of SUPs from these solar production facilities as well as many other things. And also, since we have gotten the application for rezoning for wilderness crossing, the GWOC application review committee will stand up and be doing a lot of work with that. So just wanted to make note of that as well.
I understand you and I are going to attend the ARC meetings.
That is correct. That was actually part of the Germana Wilderness Area requirement that.
We want some adult leadership or something?
So I guess we'll have to find somebody else. But yes, so that will be stood up. And this is without a doubt the largest rezoning application. But there will be others to follow shortly. And I believe one apparently is coming before, but we'll see how that one does. So I just wanted to make everybody aware that we will be having quite a number of those coming.
You mentioned SUPs and that reminded me that I'm a little puzzled by some of the recent legal advice given to the planning commission regarding special use terms. And I wonder if we could have a class of that to have the attorney at some future, you know, a work session.
Yeah, we do what we do with the four day.
And talk about that because some of the advice is running counter to my, what I've always understood and frankly, how the county's always done this. I mean, there's a number of things. So I'd like to have a better, I'd like to have a better feel for that. So if, you know, if there was a work session on that, I would be favored.
And it would actually be nice when we had that, if we could have both yourself and your assistant.
Yeah, and maybe the planning chair could come over for the planning.
That would be.
That attorney we did a couple of months, a month or so ago, that was great. Something similar to that.
Just schedule it, let me know.
Okay. I think one thing that the planning partner is looking at with the planning commission is to think about whether there's a, you know, a third-party consulting group out there that sort of knows the lay of the land, how things have changed, would evaluate our process and ordinances, look at what the changes are, and then see if there's some gap-filling or recommendations on how to respond to that. That could be sort of maybe integrated into what we do. So they're talking about that and I'll let you know what they, how they work on that. Come here.
Very good. All right, informational items are there for you. Appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Only one I see here is just one, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I would nominate Asher Richardson to the term of the Social Services Advisory Board.
Any others?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Robert Fuqua to fill the vacancy on the Rappahannock Rapid and Community Services Board. And I have talked to Randy Soderquist about the Piedmont Workforce Network Board. And he's not anxious to take another term. So we would be looking for somebody who is interested in involved with workforce training and the kind of people we need to fill out our workforce in the county. So if any of you have suggestions, I will throw this to Rodas and the EDA as well.
All right, very good. All right, could I have a motion on Mr. Fuqua and Mr. Richardson?
So moved.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Pass the committee, I must hope. All right, calendar items. Do we have anything we need to add, Mr. Simpson?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. We're awaiting the next planning commission meeting. They tabled and deferred a number of public hearing matters that will be coming your way after, potentially after their April planning commission meeting.
Very good.
Could we include the broadband authority on the calendar? I see the EDA. I hadn't noticed it. I was looking for some stuff the other day and I didn't see it.
Yes, sir. I'll have Michelle reach out to Jenny just to make sure that we're being properly informed of the meeting.
I'm sure we're getting it. I'm getting an email, but I sometimes go to this, sometimes don't remember where the emails was.
Well, one of the things that we're trying to do is schedule probably quarterly meetings that so we can get it on the calendar, everybody's aware of it. There's some bylaw issues that we have to deal with and two and three. But that's, our goal is to get to the point where at least quarterly meetings are placed on our calendars so you know about them.
Very good. Mr. Lash, thanks, sir.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss and close meeting the following matters. Discussion concerning prospective business or industry, expansion of existing business or industry where a previous announcement has made the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Consultation of legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation of a meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating option of the public body concerning RSA. Consultation of legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisional legal advice by such counsel concerning RSA. And whereas pursuant to sections 2.2, 37, 11, 85, 87, 88 of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County does hereby authorize discussion of four stated matters in closed meeting. Mean that as a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
All right, we're now closed.
Paul, if you could put this slide up, we're ready to go into closed session.
Sure thing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cole, can you hear me?
Yup.
I tried, excuse me, I tried to turn the video back on.
Try again.
I can't turn my video on because the host stopped it. Did you say try again?
Yeah.
Hey Allison.
Yes sir.
Who does the little boards like that?
Um, we have a PowerPoint template now so.
Well, the reason I ask is the last planning commission meeting they took a recess and that was the board that came up so.
Oh.
We need one that says.
For planning commission?
Yeah.
Cole, do you know who hosted the planning commission meeting?
Yeah, I think it's like...
A bunch of guys right close, it's like...
It's like, I think his first day on the job, not literally, but close to it and the planning commission threw him a curveball.
Yeah, it was a little bit of curveball from what he was telling me.
Are we... we're not live yet, right?
Uh, we are still, we can be live.
Not quite.
Alright.
Are you ready, Cole?
Yup, you're good to go.
Thank you. Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meetings. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Kreischer?
Aye.
Mr. Crane?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall is absent, and Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.